If you came up with this?
I was one of the most important.
Is your house in that?
My house in that?
Yeah.
My house is in water.
So your house is not in that? To be clear, your house is not in that, right?
My house is not in that.
Thank you.
Shocked. I'm shocked.
Do we have to really go there?
Yes.
Everybody help us! What are you doing? I mean, completely honest.
They do.
There are a lot of people in political office who just don't do meetings.
They don't like.
Who don't do meetings like those. I've done in the last three years, I think this is my fourth meeting with audience. I didn't know this would be the audience tonight. Audiences that I know are not happy about the wildfires. It's hard to come when people kind of insult what you're doing. Now, I'm ready all day long for the interview. But a suggestion, gosh, I rigged the map so I wouldn't be in high house. If that was what your comment was about. It kind of makes me kind of not want to show up because, you know, I don't like it, but then...
You got your jaw!
I'm representing this!
Well, I'm also wasting your time. And if you think I'm a liar and in bad faith, there's nothing I'm going to say that's going to influence anything, right?
We can't hear you. Are they going to fix the microphone for those of us that can't hear you?
We are, we are asking for a microphone.
Oh, yay, thank you, thank you. Some of us can't hear you.
Testing, can you hear it? That's okay?
Can you turn it up a little bit? Thank you!
Testing.
There you go.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
You shouldn't apologize if you guys suggested it. We appreciate it. So, when did the House keep saying there's numbers on the restroom doors? The men's room number is 125 head enter. The women's room number is 135 head enter. Okay, so, I'm not here to make this about me. I'm just saying, you know, as somebody who's tried kind of most of my life in politics, to speak across the divide with people who don't agree with me, that I don't agree with, and that it's getting harder to harder, it seems like, to listen to opinions that are different than yours. I think we're in a bad way in the country that way. And I keep trying, but I just, I try to be really straight. And, you know, I, I don't listen as well when people start kind of implying that I'm totally dishonest and I'm not in this for the reasons I say I am and that kind of thing. So, I'm just asking you if you could express all the opinions you want, but not make it personal. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What are you doing for, like, Pacific Power, not doing their part in this?
Times. Senate Bill 762 is a very big bill. One twentieth of which is the wildfire now.
Can I ask you why they almost let my house burn down? Because, number one, I live across the street from a fire department. They could not find our house, nor was the fire department equipped enough to shut the fire car off. The power company was eight miles away. It took them an hour to get there. The fire department almost blew up a volunteer child by telling him to spray water on an electrical source.
Why?
When the power guy finally got there an hour later, he didn't know how to turn his own damn breaker off. What are you going to do with that instead of making us be responsible for all the government's mismanagement?
Well, all, all I can, I don't have any specific answers to why I'm those questions.
I want to add something to that, sir. They have the trips turned up so high out where we live out in Wymer that when a line breaks...
Say the trips?
The trips on the electric. Pacific Power, they have, you have trips. I'm a high voltage. I, I worked in that for years. They have them turned up so high, when the lines break a lot of times, they fall on the ground and they stay live.
Which was okay.
That's what's happened on our property, in this man's property, in this lady over here, the interiors. It stayed live for forty-five minutes before the fire department found it.
When was that? When year was that?
I just got it on the phone.
Twenty, just last year.
Okay.
Oh, it's like, maybe it was two years ago.
Let me, let me make a general, general comment. Government at all levels was not ready for what's happened in Wildfire.
Excuse me, sir, I wasn't done. They, they, they could not shut it off, could not find it.
They got the point.
And while they were clogging it, they still, well, the point is, all this goes on and it's an hour and a half. A fire is live with electricity and that, and they're putting us in a high risk. We're not high risk. Our area is not high risk.
Or neglected by the powers that be.
And this is about, all these fires have started for years.
What I'm taking from your comments is that people were in charge and didn't know what they were doing.
Still in charge.
Okay. An answer to what 762 does on the utilities is that it, it has required safety plans that have already changed a lot and are still kind of going on to prevent the kind of thing you're talking about.
That was four years ago and they still have nothing in place. They still cannot shut it off. The fire department cannot, will not do that. There's no one out there in that area other than the electric company and they have no one dedicated to stay in these areas.
Well, on any specific thing that's happening like that, I would like specifics and I would like to take the...
The entire county, wherever there is not a Pacific Power office right there, there is nobody that can respond in a timely manner unless they are during business hours and they have work in that area. There was no one in Wymer. They, they had to come from Rogue River and then they were sent the other direction from Rogue River. So they had to get it, they had to find it, they had to send it. One man. And that's fifty square miles?
Let me, let me take your question.
I just have a question as far as, we have, as you know, everyone here has their own strong opinion about what's happening. My question is, is that it would be nice for us to be able to talk for me. I don't expect you to be the only person, the go-to person, but if you could give me a name and a number to get some questions answered and some direction in which to go. It's that helplessness of not having a means of talking to someone about the problem.
That's, that's a good point. So, the best website that has, and one thing is a wildfire, I think they call it a hotline, but information on about, just about everything, is the Oregon State Fire Marshals. And I don't think in my packet, I have that number, but I was going to give it on the Phil Meyer show tomorrow. So I'll do that. But if you Google Oregon State Fire Marshal and click on wildfire, you'll get to the best kind of central number there is about information. If they can't answer, they should be able to send you to a payment. Yes, what's, back there, do you have the, you, you?
Okay, so I would like to hear your comments on the fact that I pay property taxes for fire protection as well as I pay extra that I have to pay to a rule into a fire for them to come to my house to protect me from fires and what you believe that your discovery will do in addition to the amount of money that I'm already paying.
Let me, let me see if I got that right. You pay under property taxes for rural, rural fire protection districts?
I pay.
And then if they respond, and they bill you...
So I pay like everybody in this room does, property taxes for fire protection. Then I am required with where I live already, if I want true fire protection, I pay extra for a rule into real fires, which I'm having to pay.
It's fine, right.
So if, what do you think that your discoveries that you have now brought are going to do in addition to that for, as I'm already paying on top of the money?
Well, let me talk about money for a little bit because right now there is a, right now wildfire, just the basics are costing us about $300 million a year. Pardon me. By, no, this last year it has cost $300 million, most of that is suppression. That's going to go way up if we don't also invest in risk reduction, in prevention, and help people with grants to improve their properties and that kind of thing. Which we did in Senate Bill 762, which we failed to fund after that, which I think is an atrocity. So there has been a long discussion about how to fund that. Some of it is more taxes and we know how people feel about that.
So that to answer my question, your discovery is more tax, more property taxes from...
That, that is one of several suggestions. Let me tell you, when I, I have a bill, I'll tell you what I want to do. It's not going to get a standing ovation either, but it is a one-time payment and this is how it works. I'll, I'll get to it, I swear, just next. You know about the income tax kicker, right? It's, it's, I won't go into the weeds, but if there's more than the economist estimates by a bunch, the surplus goes back to tax kickers. We got a pretty big one last year. There's a, there's another one projected coming up of a total of $1.8 billion. What I am suggesting is that one time, we give that kicker up, we put her in a permanent trust fund, that if it gets 5% return, it's ready to get through that.
Trust and stay, you shit, right now? You're bullshit.
I'll finish, maybe you made that of it. So what that would do permanently, we would never be coming back. Never's a long time. Permanent you can get in government to say, guess what, we need more for wildfire. They just not spending the principal, but just getting the interest is about $220 million for by any, which is a big chunk of that $300 million. If you want a solution that's going to protect this valley of the state from wildfire and suppress the fires that has no pain attached, I don't know what it is.
How about we harvest the forest?
Amen.
How about we harvest it?
Amen. Maybe the cows can eat. Maybe just the cattle could graze, just for a start.
Let's, you've had your hand up for a while.
Yeah, how much of that $300 million is going towards hardening the BLM side? Because everyone in this room is taking care of their property. You're trying to talk us into hardening our property against wildfire. Have you seen your side of the fence?
Amen.
Yeah.
The BLM is horrible.
State, state and federal.
How come you're exempt from the same standards as us?
Like, like a wildfire because it's not been taken care of. No one's even been up there.
Over a hundred years.
So what is your plan to get your side of the fence ready for fires? Because we don't need to spend as much money putting them out if we put more money into preventing them.
Harvest it.
Cleaning the forest up. There is forest science. It's a real science. You can prove it. You can do it over and over again.
Forest management.
So, when you said your side of the fence, you mean BLM?
Yeah.
State, state and federal, state and federal.
And we're all in this room who already maintain their land.
We live there, so we have a dog in the fight. We take care of our property because we live there and we don't want it to burn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
4% of forest fires come off of BLM, onto private property and take our stuff out. 1% come off private and go into wildfires.
Yeah.
And you want to make, you want to make it about ours.
No, I haven't finished.
Let me just say that there are a lot of different statistics about that. And one thing that's happened, one thing that this bill did was mount a set of video cameras around the state for early detection. And the amount of fires that start on federal lands from lightning and come into communities has dropped through the floor. Now, and I can, I can get your source on this, the majority of fires start in the whole emissions zone, which is where, where we live right now. Some of them are still lightning fired. But answering your question, forest management is a piece of this puzzle. I disagree with folks who say that's the whole ball of wax, just do that and we're fine. Because you look at an Alameda fire and the fuse, or turn that into a moderate fire to a conflict operation was the condition of people's yards. And so there's, we got...
Wind and arson.
I really am trying to answer. So, we've got to, we've got to fight this thing on a number of fronts. On the federal front, a federal act, one of the COVID acts, two or three years ago, allocated $5.6 billion for fuel reductions on BLM and the US Forest Service.
How'd that work out?
Oregon, Oregon, well, it's still in process. You know, there's a...
Wait, didn't you just say though that the whole ball of wax isn't in prevent, isn't in cleaning up the BLM?
It isn't in any one place.
But this whole thing is to get us to...
No, if, if you look at the whole bill, it's not the whole thing.
I'm asking you about the BLM side. When are you going to get it?
And can I say you mean federal, federal lands generally, whether it's BLM or Forest Service?
Yes.
Federal kinds.
Yeah, everything that it provides.
I think that's a really fair beef that I've walked properties that are just the other side of public lands that are all overgrown, or county lands, because there's no county ordinance, or one of the few counties in kind of the fire prone part of the state that lets grasses just grow and doesn't ask anybody to do anything about it. And I totally get that someone says, you want me to meet these standards in my yard and over the fences and maps. I've seen some of that. So, the feds have started doing a better job and what we need to do is get them coordinated with us. And we are trying as hard as we can to make sure that that risk reduction work goes on near the community.
Can you be specific with what they've done and gotten better with? Be specific, please, sir.
I'd have to, I'd have to get some of the maps out.
Be specific, you're talking, you're talking here in front of your constituents and you're, that was just... Bleh, that came out.
Well, they, they spent in Oregon something like $150 million.
Where?
I don't know exactly.
Where?
I need to find that out. Well, I'm...
You aren't, you don't know where it comes from, flag out?
Could we let the gentleman speak first?
Yeah.
Everybody in your county, I guarantee it, every person, first of all. So, can you explain what we're supposed to do with this letter that came out? What, what are you expecting from us? I mean, my property is fire safe. What am I supposed to do?
Well, let me talk to someone about it and I, I'll be, I, I want to do more listening and talking tonight because I'll be talking tomorrow morning with somebody from ODF about some of these questions. First of all, I guess I'll talk about this high hazard thing. I have walked a lot of properties starting two years ago with property owners who are not happy with their rating. And in some cases, I could point to why, you could see why they were rated the way they were. And in others, you just couldn't, you just couldn't. And that has been the hardest thing I've had in public life. When you, when you go to OSU, this, the model that predicts catastrophic fire has been developed over the last twenty years, looking at all the catastrophic fires and what caused them. And so what this bill said, based on that work and earlier work by a, a group that met for the governor for a full year on wildfire, was incorporate the standards for a map and told OSU to go make the map. I will, I will add that this bill passed on a bipartisan basis. None of us were involved in the actual development of the map. But what they have said, and I really understand why people have a problem with this when they walk the ground. It's really hard to do a program when you walk the ground and it doesn't make a ton of sense what you're looking at. Is that these fires have reached an intensity in an ember depth distance and a fuel length that a single property doesn't, doesn't stop fires. And if you looked at any of the big fires of the past, Paradise, you know, you name it, what's happening in LA right now, you're going to...
They're going to be overgrown.
You would have walked through a whole lot of properties that were pristine, perfect in terms of fire reduction. But it didn't matter because of the intensity of these fires. So, but the inputs on these maps are four things.
And that was all because of the BLM and, and the government lands?
It's because California didn't take their...
What would be their rating?
I, my understanding of the fires in LA is that they did not start on federal lands.
Oh, yeah, they did.
Yeah. So, these are, you know, it's not a typical thing. We're having urban wildfires that are urban fires now instead of just forest fires. We didn't used to have that. So I, I guarantee you that people who really took good care of their property had the fires blow right through them in any of the big fires you can mention. So that, what that means is, it's on us to figure out the federal land problem you're talking about. And what we talk all the time with our federal delegation, it moves ridiculously slow, but we have to keep on that. And we have to look at fuels within our womb. We got to do both. So, the, the basis of this map, with the inputs of geography, because fire tends to move uphill, climate, weather and vegetation is what yielded this. And I totally get the frustration of people saying, my particular property, take a look at it. I've done that. I've been frustrated. And, but I don't know that they're wrong about this model of what has caused these great big horrific fires. And, and let me, let me take a couple more questions and I'll go on. Yep, with this...
Can I ask my question? What am I supposed to do?
Yeah, what are we supposed to do?
What, what responsibility?
Yes, yes, me too.
Well, well, you can...
Pay more.
I would not recommend spending money on a lawyer. So, well, you can appeal and we'll be talking about this tomorrow because the guy from ODF who's administering appeals is going to be on.
How come he can't be here tonight?
Are they?
How come he can't be here tonight?
Because we had no idea that this meeting would turn out the way it did tonight.
Oh, my gosh.
I came out to my annual...
Thank you.
So how were we supposed to do?
Okay. With that, you're, you have a right to appeal to them. I think, you know, my understanding is, if you appeal and say it's on the basis of the characteristics of your property, and look at my property, the way I've dealt with it, your appeal will not be successful. That's, that's my understanding. You have to show that according to the inputs of the map, a mistake was made. And mistakes get made, but I doubt that there are many. And I'm also really considered a professional. Based on the model, based on the model. You have had your hand up for a long time.
Can I, can I just ask what's wrong with this obvious suggestion that if you just talk to any blue collar folks around here, they all say the same thing? Is there any way that we can just fast track, okay, the private contractor to get in there? Yes, on these government, these BLM lands, whatever, with machines? And be in there chipping up these hundred dollar fuels, these thousand dollar fuels? Can we not rely on the federal behemoth that takes so long and we have no idea what they're doing? Because I'll tell you what, you get some private contractors in there, they're something fierce. They're going to get it done. And it'll put people to work down here for a long, long time.
Amen.
Well, I can't do that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Does that, does that not make sense? Is there any reason...
I, I think that's a reasonable idea if we pay for it. If, if now we...
You already have the money, sir.
I don't have a dime. That's a proposal.
You already have the money.
What, are you talking about the kicker?
You already have the money. You said it would cost money. You've already got the money, man.
We do?
Yeah. Hey, save the kicker.
If you get the kicker, if you get the kicker, you got the money. I will tell you, there, there are probably people in this room, there are a ton of people in the room saying, we're not touching that kicker. I think it makes sense. If we did have that, maybe we could do that. We, we are relying, because it's so much pedal around, we are relying on the feds to take care of it. They have not been doing a good job.
They're not doing this right.
And we are, I, I do think it's changing. I'm sorry, I can't...
Let Oregonians take care of it.
Yes, ma'am, right there.
I would like to know if on behalf of your constituents, you will tell us how we can get this bill repealed?
Yes.
Amen.
Yes. Can it be repealed?
I will be very straight with you. I oppose repeal because it does not be funded exactly.
She asked you a question.
Let me, let me, I don't think you want to repeal this bill.
We do!
May I finish, can I finish my sentence, please?
Answer her question.
Uh, I am answering your question.
Thank you.
Let me tell you why I think I don't want you to repeal Senate Bill 762. Let me, let me say it. That the wildlife maps, I'll say it one more time, are about 5% of Senate Bill 762, which does, has brought a ton of money to this community, you know, there's in fire personnel, fire trucks, all kinds of things. What I think you want to do is amend 762 to change this map, this mapping. Am I right on my line?
We want to remove that.
Okay, that's an amendment. That's, I'm just saying, there's a ton of good stuff in this bill. I don't think anybody else...
5% is bad, what's in there is 95%.
Well, you can do one of two things. You can find a legislator who wants to, wants to do that and then can go the majority of legislators passing. Or you can do an initial petition and take it to the ballot itself. Those are the two ways to do it.
So how many, how many signatures do we have to have to legally force one of you all to do that as your constituents are asking? How many signatures does it take to force you to bring a repeal?
I don't know the process like that. I don't, I don't know the process of the process.
I understand it, but they have to have one of them to bring it forward.
What about the county commissioner?
There are a bunch of people worrying about this.
They're all in bed together.
You said, change the, the map is based off of five figures. And you said that somebody might want to come out and walk your property and see if it was incorrect. Me personally, my property says it's on, it's, there's 4.22% of properties in the state higher than mine in danger. Mine's a little specific. I have a metal house, built fireproofing concrete, I have heavy equipment. I'm an structural firefighter, that's what I do for a living. I have firefighting equipment in the house. I put in fire breaks, cleared property to the point that I've gotten funds from Department of Forestry to do so. And it's almost like they're not talking to me. I have, I've gotten, I've cleared...
I'm sorry, Forestry funded you to do what?
Oregon Department of Forests, funded me to be fuels reduction.
Well, there, there are, that was part of that bill too.
They've given me thousands of dollars to do so over a couple of years. I've cleared it. It has not affected my fire map rating at all. And we say individual properties don't affect the map. I own a couple hundred acres. So is somebody going to come look at my property specifically or are we just blanketing everything? And they can look at, they can look at the funds that you guys have given me to do that work that has no effect on my...
So let me, let me say something about that. It's true that what, the work you do doesn't factor into the hazard rating. Where it does factor in is, you're good, you're done. What, what that high rating does at some point is kick in a couple set of rules. One is how you're doing your defensible space. And from what you've said, you are past what the standards are.
It has no effect on the fire map and my rating. To the point I got a phone call in the spring and that the insurance company I had in the last twelve years broke, specifically noted it was due to the fire map. And they did, they 100% did. They shot eighteen companies. Three of the eighteen companies would give me insurance. My insurance was $2,800 and went to $8,400.
Yeah.
And they stated it was specifically due to the fire map. And I said, that's supposed to be illegal. It is illegal, but we're doing it anyway. So none of this, none of my own preparation and words that I got from the state to do this work are affecting your state fire map. So is there going to be a site for site visit in everybody's property or is this just a blanket?
I don't think there's going to, you can get a site visit to get advice on how to make your land safer. You're already there. Yeah. So let me, I got to get my insurance and I know this is tough and I know it takes people off. The insurance commissioner has sworn affidavits from every single company that they did not use our map. They all have them. Has their own map, their own, I, I mean, if you look at when they started, these spikes and premiums and the non-renewals, they started even before this bill was passed.
They're lying to you, Jeff. They're lying to you.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm not sure why they would have to somehow swear, you know, perjure themselves on an affidavit. They could have said, yeah, we used to have.
How many rates went up last year?
But, you know, I, I, the insurance problem is huge. It's national, it's huge, it's threatening homeownership. Best I can tell, I'm not, I wasn't in every closed door meeting, I can't tell you for an absolute fact, nobody looked at the map when they were making underwriting decisions. I strongly believe that nobody who's in a bad way on insurance right now would be in a good way if it weren't for this bill.
No. Come on now. And then they created their own map that you gave them. A loophole to use your map to triple our insurance rates.
Well, I understand your anger on that and I can't disprove what you're saying. I don't think the company signs...
I can't disprove what you're...
I don't think you have a reason at all. We have, we have a huge, huge problem, but they didn't need our maps.
And the huge problem is that your wildfire...
And the huge problem is that your wildfire maps, and these are a whole way.
I got a good question for you, Jeff, Jeff. Do you happen to know a good lawyer that we could start a class action lawsuit and sue the state for your fire map?
They're plenty of lawyers, they're, they're, they recommend, you know, they're mentor full of lawyers. Get, get this map, and then, and then we'll go there.
I have a problem understanding the map. First off, I don't understand why properties moderate, a huge color purple, and then in the middle of it is one top that's green. What made that property so special that that one's green?
Commissioner.
Is that, is that the current map? Because there was a lot of them. They called it speckling. They called it speckling, and they came back and, but they tried to get rid of just about all of it.
And a lot of the addresses don't come up there. I have a piece of property, and I put up a address, it pulls up property, three properties away. And that address has been assigned to that property for twenty years. So, and I've tried some other properties, and they just, they show no address when you click on that top one. I, this map is very scary, it looks like a three-year-old came in with a brush.
Exactly.
And what you're telling us about, I think it could be a successful grounds for appeal. What won't be is, I take it right here on my property, so it can't be a hazard. Because of the, because it's a landscape map, and I find out to go in the weeds too much there. What I don't want is, now, the, the appeal that you can do online with that one-page thing is not a great big deal. But I, um, I don't, I, I, I'm worried about people getting frustrated if they go out and hire lawyers. If they're making an appeal on a basis that's not going to be successful. And I, everybody's got a right to appeal, I'm not telling them not to. I don't want it, people are frustrated now.
This problem has been going on for more than a couple of years. This has been an ongoing decade problem from the mismanaged, from the people, people take care of their homes, we live on them, we chop down trees. It's the state and federal government that has failed to take care of the surrounding property that are, a majority of this map are surrounded by high fire areas, owned and managed by the government.
True spoken.
Millions of dollars have been spent, and yet it's been a failure. You were talking about this bonus money, a billion dollars, that's just tax money that you count.
That's right. We haven't done that.
No, but if you're going, we're going to keep interest on our money, and I'm going, and you're going to tell me if you get another three hundred million, you're going to use it better than the last probably five hundred, the billion, or million you've spent over the last twenty years?
That's right.
What are you going to guarantee us? If we give you our money, you keep it, which you shouldn't, but if you do, you're going to do anything better except hire more people, more administrative fees, come in and make some excuses, as I can help our insurance bills deliver. You're not going to come and tear down trees for us. So, tell them what you're going to do with our money, that you have already wasted it before, what's new, what program is the new one?
Well, let me, let me say this about the three hundred million dollars. Every penny of that went to suppress and fight fires. It's not, we're not getting ahead of the game, we're just putting fires out at this point. We're, we're not doing the kind of grantship, the kind of.
So, get ahead of it with the contractors in the forest now.
Have the loggers in to take care of business.
Bring the loggers in.
There's another piece, there's another piece that nobody's talking about. Seventy percent of fires are human caused. How many of these fires that we've experienced, including in LA, have been caused by homeless?
Yep.
People who are mentally ill. That's really a big piece of the puzzle.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question. I, I would have to say some. But there's a lot that happened from things like, you know, trailer chains dragging on the concrete.
Give us some statistics. Come on, some statistics, please don't.
You know, I think you're a member of the. But your, your point is, that, that homeless folks with careless campfires or whatever, that is probably what caused the almeria fire. That, that is true, that happens.
They purposely start them down in LA, and they say, well, I like the smell the leaves burn.
Well, so, I think what that says is that we have even more challenge. You know, what, what do we do about that, that there are homeless people out there?
Mountain hill, they need help.
You know, I'm, I'm not sure that moves us to a solution, it probably moves us to bigger bills. I'm not sure.
Well, I'm just saying, there's other pieces to the picture.
Yeah, that is.
And what we're being caught up in.
Have a call back.
Yeah, I have the privilege of working for AT&amp;T on towers, and I've been all over Southern Oregon. And I will tell you, places like Solomon View, over here, um, near Cave Junction, they're ready to explode now. Five-year solution from the feds, but it's going to be gone, it's going to absolutely be gone. I've come here to try and hear a solution. We need solutions today, not five years from now, or we will lose Ashwin Corbett.
I agree. I think what we're seeing in LA is a preview of coming home traction.
So, what is, what is something?
That's the plan.
Well, that's what 762 is about, it's trying to take on. But you're talking about the, 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 you obviously hate, I get that. But it's, it, it takes this problem on in about ten times.
Don't, don't, don't talk to people more. Sir, to finish my statement, our government seems to be bent on not profiting and, and solutions that benefit us, but rather scarcity. Your solutions all deal with scarcity. We have the means, we have the people here, we could fix this if we're given permission. Your, your Salem organization and the DC, don't give a rat's behind about those solutions that are right here, that's why we're mad.
Say a little bit more about the solution you have in mind there.
Beautiful employment, bear the rush, let them profit with the trees which used to be our school.
Right, the logging.
Okay, okay.
We need to go back to what worked, because what's here doesn't work.
Let, let me. Let me say something about that. I actually think that could be part of the solution. But what I hear from, what I hear from folks is, this is pretty simple. Let's get out and log all that stuff, and we don't have a wildfire problem anymore. If you, if you, I think if you're out in the woods, but certainly if, if, what the foresters will tell you is, we've got areas that are the most fire prone, the ones that really stoked these fires. And we've got areas that have commercial log value. The overlap between those areas is really small. It's not like just go ahead and log and dealt with the wildfire problem.
Have you ever logged?
Yeah, in, in my early days, I used to log.
Because there's a lot of loggers in this room.
Yeah, right. And I know that, and this, this whole town and communities, they still log it. But, but where our problem is, where these fires gain their intensity, their heat, are not in stands of commercially desirable timber. And, and I'm, I'm quite sure of that. That, that doesn't say that the idea of doing some more logging to pay for some of this is a bad idea, it's a good idea. But any idea that it is the solution, I believe is incorrect.
The commercial logging will pay for that shit logging. Taking all that, you're, you're making money, you're the governor, you're not supposed to put it in your pocket, you're supposed to put it back in.
We're, we're supposed to pay for programs.
It, it will do that, it will pay to clear the evidence stuff out.
Well, I'd like, that's contrary to what I hear from, from foresters that, that walk the ground, that, you know, if you're, I'd like, I'd like to see some analysis that says there's so much value out there that it will pay for all the non-productive clearing and our other fires.
They want to protect their value.
Analysis for you, you're having to make these stupid ass maps, have them do analysis on what it would do.
Yes, yes, sir. Well, they, they've already.
She's not a surfer.
OSU has already commented on this, has said, yeah, there's some value on there.
Talking to me, actually, um, he pointed at me, my arms are full. So, I, I have, I have two questions. So, I, I deal in a different set of the government, and we write rules, and the agencies change the way they're implemented to far beyond the way the rules are written, that's, that's a problem. And the only solution, everybody here, my guess, has got one of these, I got about thirty of them, I'm a developer, I, I cleared a piece of land, I skinned it, I sent the map to the ODF and showed them that the forest was no longer there, I never got a response, I never got anything. And, and I showed them aerial photos and included their aerial photo right next to it, so it was clearly obvious what the deal was. So, how am I, what are you, what are you going to do, what's the legislature going to do to follow up with ODF to make sure that they're running these hearings in a reasonable manner? Because right across the street, I developed the other hundred lots there, right across the street, same topography, but there's no longer the trees there, that's not in the, in the wildfire zone, but my skin's landed, there isn't any more foliage on it than on that board right there. And so, somebody isn't paying attention there, what kind of, what are you going to do to make sure that they are paying attention when you submit a field?
Well, that, that's the judiciary, that's an administrative law.
Did the microphone quit working again?
What are you going to do, though? What are you going to do to make sure that the judiciary is doing their part that you're telling us about now?
Well, we'll have them report to us, and I, I, it is not my role to sit there and say, yeah, he's right, he's wrong. It's not, you know, that's what judges, have you fixed it?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I, I have a question, I, I'm sure others are sitting here with the same. And that is, I read over everything before I came to the meeting tonight, on the rules that you're saying pertain to insurance companies not being legally able to drop you. The rule can, your rules can evade that, but the, but the fact is, is that I'm going to give you, for instance, which I'm sure everyone has, insurance company thirty-five years, all of a sudden I get a letter in the mail.
Outlawed.
All, all of a sudden I get a letter in the mail saying that they gone over and viewed our property, and we need to take care of some trees. They come out, we take care of the trees. The next year, they come out and they, they, and they drop us, and then I say, I get everything that you said, we cleared everything around the house, what is the problem, and what can we do? They basically said, nothing, we just are dropping you. Asked a reason, they don't have to give a reason, they're just dropping you. So, even though you have a law that states that the insurance can't do it, they're doing it anyway, and they're giving away with it.
You will.
So, so let me just finish from what I've, I've been waiting for a while on this. So, as a property owner that has acreage, I have irrigation. I could use that irrigation if a fire broke out, I could use that to protect my property. PPNL comes in and kicks off the electricity. Now, I'm sitting there with a piece of property that I could be defending myself, not waiting for a fire, uh, ambulance, I mean, fire engine to come in and do anything, but I have no means to do it. And, and they don't have to give a reason, plus, you guys stay, they're, we're supposed to be informed prior to. Some of us have medical things that we use in our home. We're not being told ahead of time to get things ready, to get things going, they just, you're sitting in your front room, and your lights are out. They're not informing people, they're not calling, they're not doing any of that. You call and you try to get someone, and that's the problem is, I, I feel bad that you're in this position with all of us attacking you right now, but we're coming to you, and you say that it's not in your jurisdiction or your job type, you know, description, but we're coming to you saying, what can you tell us, what direction that we can go in? Not saying just, it's not my place to do anything, we need you to tell us for us to know what direction to go in, because we're not getting anywhere. And you call a department, you're lucky if you get a real person they can talk to.
Yeah.
And, and you have to go through all these automated things, and then you wait for forty-five, two hours, whatever, and then you get disconnected. So, I'm just saying, we are lost.
We're hard to study.
Yes, we are.
How do you not know that?
We are lost of what direction that we can go. We don't expect you to answer everything or the be-all and do-all person, but we need help as property owners. Where, you know, it's like, would you agree that PPNL is turning off? In my opinion, they're turning off the electricity because their equipment is not up to par for what it is that it needs to be doing. So, they're turning it off because they're covering themselves for liability.
It's ten times in eight hours.
Would you, would you agree with that, Jeff?
Do you push through your talent?
No, I wouldn't want her.
Okay. Yes, I think they are cautious, more cautious than they used to be, and shutting people down, or letting things go down.
And then they shut us off eight, ten times in eight hours.
For wildfire. Now, we have to hold it on a life of the wildfire. We, you know, because so many of these are.
So, how do you fight your own fire if they shut them off?
Well, that's, yeah, that's a good question.
They shut it off because they are responsible for so many other fires that they don't want to be responsible with either. That's the problem.
Everywhere you look, we're in a mess with this thing, because we have utilities starting to.
And it all starts because.
We do, we do, we do California Pacific Power, Pacific Water, that we got, because of the liability, could happen in Oregon. We need utility companies.
It will happen in Oregon if this is not fixed, and you don't let, like, these guys suggesting to go out and just log it, pay for it, and have it be done?
But to her question, if not you, who do you go to, to help us? If you can't help us clear out the floor for us, if you can't help us solve the situation, who is it?
Well, there are different pieces of this. What I, what is in my jurisdiction is to have a public hearing where people can testify, I don't have to listen to them, to do it online, of your experiences on this map, that other legislators could hear too. I said before, I'm not open, open to appealing since it's a future, I think it has too much good stuff. I am open to talking about how we change this mapping system. If there, you know, I don't know what the answer is exactly. I, I, I vote, when I walk the ground and can't see the sense of a high-hazard designation, that really bothers me. I don't, I'm not ready to say that, you know, these thousands of fire scientists are totally bogus when they create a model.
Would you agree?
No, it's college kids.
Would you agree that there are enough people that have frustration and.
Thousands of fire scientists.
Would definitely do whatever we want to do to meet together, whatever we need to do, we would do, but no one is coming to us. We are just sitting here getting this in the mail, saying, this is your new map, and this is what you're going to have to deal with. And, and we have, we're not given any direction. You're saying, even doing an appeal or getting an attorney, thank you for saying that it would be a waste of money. I knew that it would be a waste of money to get an attorney, but I think you, in your position, should be able to tell us what we can do to help this situation out.
Well, I would think possibly, for example, the testimony could lead to energy to amend 762 around the map.
So, what would be the steps for each of us to come to that, where we give a testimony, where do we go, how do we get established?
Well, I always announce in my newsletter when we're running hearings, and, um, you get that just by putting your email address on the site, on my government website, we never share it on the public. You'll, you'll get the newsletter, and we will announce when that can happen, and then you can sign up for votes and justify it. I gotta tell you, the, um, truth of things is that so many people who testify, not on this, but on other ones, that often testimony is available in one few minutes, and what you can do is submit written testimony, so that's not always been so.
Yeah.
But I, I do go in there. Can I? That's the problem. You just, one problem that I know is the line of the map.
I guess you just start talking.
When I go to their site, and it says, here's a link to get to the public data that's behind the map. You try and click on that data, and those files won't open, you need, so there's no way to check to see if anything is active.
How recent is that experience?
Um, what's today, today is Thursday, Tuesday. Okay, so, would you, you have my email, would you drop me an email, I will specifically, that's another thing. Let me see if there's anybody. Because they don't, they don't have the numbers even behind it. You get a number that says, here's your wildfire hazard value, mine's one point five something, I'm in the top point five four percent of the state. So, I'm an overachiever, I guess. But it says, it's supposed to be based on climate, weather, topography, and vegetation, there are no layers that tell. there are no layers that tell what those are.
I want to go off of here.
And when I talk to the people of state, they say, well, we run all these modeling things. I go, okay, where can I check that? That's why.
Beer, can I?
I have to have dinner.
You can't, I can't do it.
Well, I know you know what you're doing, which is how, I will.
Yes, you should.
One thing I have heard here is, in your listening moment, notice, is that you come out and inspect our property, we'll have to improve our property, not only get rid of the hazards, the city gate, and the six foot pile, but your house. If your roof isn't right, if we're gonna remodel your house, now you're gonna have an enforcement, you're gonna have people coming out to enforce, possibly, most likely, new building codes, you're gonna have to build in certain ways, you don't have a plan. How much does that cost, being everybody in this room, to do it?
Let me, first of all, to be clear, you did get a right, there is no law, no intended law, to make or change your existing.
Or you get a fine.
If you're smart, that's, that's the next bill, you're gonna have an enforcement, you can't just enforce it on a minor.
I'll tell you that, I'll buy you a very big, much, private program.
Really? Really?
Wow. I'm on your house. There is, when this takes fully a hold, if you are in high hazard, and add your house to build a new house, you have, which, by the way, their insurance company wants to secure it. As far as the, as far as the extra cost, it has been wildly exaggerated, and if you shop for building materials, you go ahead and compare the cost of metal roof to a chingle, you could, or any other roof. I'm not saying that it's never a dollar more.
It's four times as much.
Maybe that's not a big cost to you.
It's four times as much, a metal roof compared to asphalt shingles is about four times as much.
He's right. We just have.
I'm in the, look up.
So, whatever, building codes says, is generally speaking, it can increase the value, or the price of new construction, three to eleven percent altogether. Now, tell me if you're, you've been, you've been shopping, what is the comparative cost of wood siding, not tiled, but wood siding, and, um, uh, hardy plant, or?
Hard double.
Double. Okay, well, I'll say that's different, the figures, but if you're doing the shopping, I'll leave you on that. But as you, as you think about this, the big picture, and I just, let me talk about this, I know that we are in an unsatisfied situation. What drives me, the recent rain for office this last time, what gets me up in the morning to do everything I can to keep this valley a little bit better, there's a lot that I can't do. I totally believe that what we're seeing in LA right now is the road value in twenty acres. If we don't do some road traffic stuff, it's gonna be more expensive for us, more like community for us. Those of you who are saying, let's get into the middle for us and figure out, that is part of this. I'm not gonna agree with you that just do that in the papers.
How can you deny that, though? Because in the nineties, you never had this problem.
Exactly.
Until the spot where it became a danger.
We also have, we already have.
We had the same thing every year, don't you try full climate change? Go full climate change.
What? Santa Ana winds?
We don't have Santa Ana winds.
Okay.
We don't have Santa Ana winds, quit bringing up California, this is boring.
Okay.
You're using California as work.
Here's a really silly question. How, how much, how, how much of this bill, is there any part of this bill that has benefited any of us? Because as far as I'm seeing and hearing, nothing here has been, what you've done has not benefited anybody that you work for.
Earlier, you heard about grants, we had grants in there.
That's not a benefit, because our insurance, our taxes, never.
Yeah.
That's not a benefit, what is benefiting us?
We have local fire departments, and you might, and I call yours, who've got the equipment, and.
The fire department couldn't find our house.
Volunteer departments.
How many have gotten here in this area? She's asking for this area here, sir, Jackson County.
You said you were a fire. Do you have a volunteer fire department in Oregon?
We're supposed to, but they don't, you know, I live across the street.
Okay, so they were thinking about, ask them, I would, I would guess.
Ask them what?
Ask them what, how they benefited?
If, if they got money from this.
No, ask them what you do.
Don't you benefit when a fire department?
No, I don't. I just told you a story that the fire department could not find us.
If they're more effective, we benefit. If they just have the training.
They have no training.
They're volunteers, kids in the country.
You've got eighteen-year-olds that don't know you.
I have a, a quick idea, I knew you were. Maybe, maybe you might know this statistic, because this has to do with a lot of rural property owners, uh, the marijuana industry in the state of Oregon, okay? We invited everybody to come here, big land grabs, the state taxes the heck out of that stuff, how much money has the state made off of marijuana sales?
It's almost all gone into.
But it's about three billion. Please, please, let me just, let me just finish here, I've heard.
That went well.
That start with a B, right? Three billion?
I, I, I don't know, I don't think it's.
Okay, here's the last, the last suggestion, maybe, you know, to, to take back with you and to think about, out of that surplus, or the Oregon lottery, or any of these other things that are going on, these folks that have had insurance companies for thirty-five years, and fifty years, and twenty-five years, and then they say they wanna insure them, right? And if they can make, they can prove that this has happened, okay? How about the state of Oregon fit that bill? That way you hold the insurance company feet to the fire, and the state of Oregon has an initiative, and those dollars are getting used.
The last speaker got me.
So, so if you, okay, the money off the Oregon lottery, the money, the, like I said, I've heard Oregon has surplus three billion dollars off of the marijuana industry, right?
Would you note that?
And so we can, so we can, that is more than enough to cover every piece of property in, in southern Oregon, in all of Jackson County, and it would settle all this. If you've had your insurance for twenty-five years and thirty-five years, and they drop you, right? Which is supposedly not legal, because there, this'll be a way around your map, too, the state of Oregon.
That's not illegal, if somebody's dropping.
Right.
Okay, but you said it was illegal. So here's the, here's the last part, the state of Oregon, okay, can protect its citizens, can protect its tax-paying citizens, and fit that bill?
With their own money.
With the own money that's already there, sir, I just think that would be a great idea.
So let me.
Since we let everybody else from Texas and Florida and overseas come in here, you know?
You've probably, you may have heard of the FAI plan, that is the state's insurance plan.
What plan is it called?
The FAI plan, F A I line, and it is for people who get rejected coverage by more than two carriers. And, and you can get fire insurance from them, I'm gonna tell you, the terms aren't very good.
Not at all, extremely expensive.
The terms are high, and the cap on what you can collect is lower, so.
It is just an idea.
So, the question becomes, it's being debated, should government take a bigger role in the insurance industry?
No.
No, just protecting the citizen whose insurance has been dropped.
Well, that's your role.
Using the money that you've already paid.
The money that's already there, this surplus, and please look into how much the state of Oregon.
Use that, just start thinking that.
Yes.
No, there, same thing.
Ten thousand dollars a year for insurance on my side, over thirty-five a year, I never had a claim, and they dropped me because they say, you're a risk. Do you not think they owe me some money back?
Yeah.
Well, I can, think about it, how can they do it? You said it not supposed to, and writing in law, it says they can't drop you based on where you're located on the map, but they are, and they tell you they are, they got, second thing I want to say, is you guys are.
If we only announced that we're all in danger, why would they not build a health award?
Where's TV and health? When they shut your power down, that they don't have a grant program, so that you can install a generator, I looked into it, like I run my irrigation pump, I run my well, fight my own fires, thirty thousand dollars to get a generator big enough to run your house and your well and your irrigation, where's the grant? Well, again, we're asking for more government support.
More help for the money we already gave you.
They will pass a toss to that onto you in the rings, yeah, so. I've been around a long time, right? I was one of the ones that was out there. But all I wanna say is, finish my, finish my statement, I'm not being rude, I'm not being obnoxious, I'm simply telling you that, in LA, what was the biggest argument? Why? What happened to our fire hydrant? Why are our reservoirs dry? Why did we turn our faucet on and fire, get our rooftops wet? The guy that did, saved his house.
Yeah, and we're getting ripped out.
So the bottom line is, PPNL's doing this blackout whenever they want to, because they don't wanna get sued like they did in Phoenix and Kalam, three hundred and fifty million dollars, or whatever the number is, you probably don't have a mind.
Not even a job.
Start the grant program, you're absolutely right. In the nineties, when they had the forestation grants, they would pay you, a man like this that has equipment, and his crew would come out and clean private forest lands under a grant, or you could do it yourself and they'd pay you twenty-five bucks an hour. Well, I gotta say.
Well, it is still doing that.
Let me, let me, because we're out of time, a couple people haven't spoken this, let's see.
But just, thank you for being here, Jake, I appreciate you being here. We have a huge problem, I, I think, and it's the map is the problem? Yes. Ninety percent, okay, six percent of the state has landmass, has high ratings like we have, probably everybody in this room.
We have more in our district.
Ninety percent, it's right here in Jackson Josephine County, first question is, of the two hundred and twenty million dollars that was supposed to go into seven sixty-two, how much, how much percentage did Jackson and Josephine County get? I know we got some grants, but I'm guessing it wasn't ninety percent.
It wasn't.
No, so that's one thing.
Most of it went to suppression of fire, to everything.
Okay, I want you to know that Josephine, Jackson County, right now, its landmass value is going down. You can say, well, we have fires, we're a risk, it's gonna go down, but I can tell you, just had that conversation today with realtors, I wanna sell my property in Ashland, okay, I'm five and in urban wildland interface, oh my goodness, that's gonna be a problem. Yes, your insurance can, we've covered you, we'll cover you, not gonna drop you, but they ain't gonna pick up, you know, your potential buyer, so the buyer can't get insurance, of course, can't get a mortgage.
That's it.
The value of your property is going down, and that's happening throughout the state of Jackson County.
Yeah.
Right now, values are plummeting.
Right.
I'm just, they will, they will take into the actual conclusion and say, well, everybody in the West who has a fire, who would move to the West because they got forest fires? Well, maybe, maybe not, but we are, we do have a problem right now selling a home. If you're, if you're, it's no longer risk, I appreciate Senate Bill eighty, the change to some hazards, but risk, hazard, that's all I did solve, Senate Bill eighty, if I'm not, that, that's what you did, that was a great bit of legislation, following in buckles, seven sixty-two, so, I'm surprised you didn't think that there was gonna be this out, out, try right now, tonight.
No, I didn't say that, I didn't, when I didn't expect, because of my annual town hall, I didn't expect it was gonna be this, because of the time.
Anyway.
I, I hear from people a lot, I know.
I appreciate that we just don't know what the model's based on, appealing to a model that we don't know, what, what is it we're appealing to? I would hope everyone appeals, I don't know who's gonna handle all those appeals, how long it's gonna take, but it's probably gonna be just smoke and mirrors and right out the window, from what I've heard, they've already, they have the old, they have the rules, they won't tell you the rules, so you can't appeal. So, that's a bitch issue.
How about a group content to last, last, answer the few last questions in the air, in the room? Could you take the last line, hands in the room?
Okay, forty-three years ago, there was a fire in Timberland, that's what it all comes to, and since that time, there's, it has been a dramatic increase in, in forest fires. And what, what I find annoying, to put it mildly, is that politicians don't say, you know, we made a huge mistake here, that where, what's going on now, it doesn't work, the forest here were known as, as best as worst, there were roots in the forest that looked like they were doing, and immediately jumped on what happens going on, and here we're doing this, and now we're doing that, and it's not, the end result is that it's never gonna be fixed, and that we're gonna be driven from the land, because there's gonna be all kinds of building codes that are so onerous, and maybe you don't have to do it when you live there, but you can sell it with, as there's the shingles, there is, like they did with fireplaces, or stonewalls, you can't sell it, so our properties are going down, we can't get insurance, so it's a big mess. I think the end result is that, that the legislator is trying, and you, and March, are trying to get us off the land, by the way, I wanted to.
True spoken!
I'll just say that. You're not gonna believe it, I have no interest in driving, I'm not, but. You'll say whatever. The last, the last thing I'll say is, I really feel frustrated, I think we are in a terrible place on the wildfire, I would not throw a lot of money at this valley surviving the next fifteen years, I'm just looking at what's going on, all around us, we're doing, that's not saying we're, we got a perfect program, of course we do, this, this, this thing has to be revised over time, I will try to stay open and helpful, sorry if I argue.
You got two ladies over here that held their hand up for like a half an hour.
Tried to listen.
Yes.
I didn't always succeed, I'm, I'm also very frustrated, and I, I am sorry we're all in this situation, really.
The library's closing, I need to, I'm going to go now, Lori and all have time to talk, and ask Heather questions.
Thank you, sir.